Let's call it to order. This is past my hand now, but... Oh, yeah, I'll get it back here. That's okay. Oh, thank you. Thanks. Okay. Introductions is on the agenda. Do we need introductions? Or we probably should.
I think we should, yeah.
Let's start. Let's start right down at this end of the room.
All right, I'm Julian Pomador. I'm from Wyndham. And I'm visiting today to try to apply next year for this school board.
Awesome. Wonderful.
Nice, welcome.
Thank you for coming.
Great interest.
Glad you're here. Hope you learned something.
I hope it's not too early.
Yeah.
Oh, it's gonna be live tonight.
You picked the right night to come, actually. So, thank you for being here. Frank?
Frank Recker, the financial administrator?
I think we do. Evan Riley, student member.
I'm Jeanine Agaspar Abeksham, student member.
We have Dr. Dorfman here. Dr. Dorfman, the principal. I'm the man with the ears. Obviously, a veteran of the strolling of the heifers. I saw you there. Marching. Steven John, superintendent of schools. I'll take this off after introductions.
Emily Long from Nuvek.
I'm Twyla Holden from Townsend.
Bruce Farland, Jamaica.
And then Noel Bowle from Brooklyn.
Patty Dixon from Jamaica. Jamont.
Jamont.
Jamaica Jamont.
I'm Bauman Madhavi from Nuvek.
I'm Kelly Warder from Nuvek.
Howard Ayers from Wyndham.
Peter Paris, recorder.
All right, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for being here. Boy, it has been a busy few weeks, has it not? I bet it's even busier for you guys who are at the end of the school year. So, thanks for coming. I was actually thinking, maybe we were gonna get our student board members tonight, but thank you for being here. You're committed. We appreciate that. Helps to make us committed as well.
Vermont Strong.
Vermont Strong, very good.
That's it.
Okay. Members of the public and special recognition. So, we've already done our member of the public. Did you have anything else you wanted to share or add?
No.
Okay, great. Please, anytime you want to speak during the meeting, I hope you will.
All right.
So, we'll move on to the special recognition. I would not let this night go by without honoring, in a very small way, Frank Recker, who has been with Leland and Gray for 26 years?
Twenty-six years, yes.
He did move on a little bit to Wyndham Central, but only for the last few years. He really has been a longtime Leland and Gray employee. And even when he moved down the road, we missed him a little bit, even though he's been at every meeting. But Frank, you have been such a solid rock for us here. And I know I'm not the only one, and I hope other people will speak after me. I'm not gonna take a lot of time, but I know that we at Leland and Gray are probably gonna miss you more than any school district in our SU. And we're all gonna miss you. That I keep hearing it everywhere I go. "Oh, boy, he's actually leaving." And it's starting to really hit home. And you have been such a big part of Leland and Gray for such a long time. And staff, you know, they went through withdrawal when you moved, you know, a few yards down the road. So, it's gonna be tough for everyone here without you. But we are thrilled for you as well. And really happy that you're moving on to an even bigger system than ours. And you're not going very far.
No, still in the neighborhood.
Which is really nice. You'll still be in our SU as a resident. And we're glad we're not losing you for everything. But thank you, you know, for everything you've done for us. We're gonna really miss you, Frank.
Very good, Frank.
Someone else?
Well, I was just gonna say that we're reminded of the institutional memory that Frank has always provided for Leland and Gray, because we've been here so long. And when we were trying to put together commencement, and we're trying to figure out about the scholarships and so forth, that kind of knowledge is not to be taken for granted. And I think we'll be, you know, it'll be quite a challenge for those of us who are still here working on our memory banks to make sure that we don't slip up in some way. But, of course, we could always call him, but, you know...
We'll try not to.
We'll try to restrain ourselves on that. And, you know, 26 years is a good piece of service, I guess.
Sure is.
I was figuring out, Frank, I'd have to go about 11 more years to make it there. I'd like to see that happen, but we'll see.
We'll see what we can do, huh?
Right, yeah.
It could really start, yeah.
You do.
I'd just like to speak as a relatively new member. Frank was absolutely amazing in trying to bring me up to speed. Numbers are not my thing, so... But it was fabulous. And then we got all involved in the sale of the Brookline School to the town, and town meetings. And Frank kept saying, "Don't worry, I have your back. I have your back." And there's nothing that beats that.
That's true.
You're just a calm, constant... And I've only known you a couple, year and a half or something, but I will miss you very badly. So, stay in Brooklyn. And he also has two amazing sons.
And an amazing daughter as well.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Have her come on the 26th. Miss you a lot.
Anyone else?
Just wish you good luck, and thank you for all the time you spent trying to make what looks like Navajo be English. Be confidential.
Yes, thank you. Thanks again for 26 years of punching the numbers and making them come out even easier.
Yeah, so far, we've done pretty well. It hasn't always been easy, but it's a great group, great community, so supportive, and just such dedication with our staff, the board, the board over the years. It's just been terrific, so... Many, many years I was in between the two principal offices for 20 years, I think.
Right here in the building, yeah.
Yeah. And I really enjoyed that, because I was closer to the students. I was accessible to the programs, the challenges. I would see front and center so much of what, you know, we struggle with, but also the successes of so many of our students. And it's certainly given me an appreciation, a lot of motivation, you know, to make sure that... Careful with our decisions, you know, when we do budget development and when we set tax rates and we ask so much of our community. So, it's so good to be close to why we're all here. And I appreciate the opportunity that I had.
Well, a lot of our successes have an awful lot to do with you, Frank. So, thanks. I think that it would be a really good idea for us to have a little refreshment. So, maybe we could... I actually came prepared with a cake.
And you made it.
And I made it.
You need to entertain a motion to recess.
So, we should entertain a motion to recess, because I am certain the viewers of Broadbent Community Television don't want to watch us eat cake. But I do think we should eat cake.
But you're welcome to come.
This is why you should join the board.
I'll just...
I'll make cake.
I even wrote it down. Little plastic bag.
Once every 26 years.
I hope I spelled it correctly. So, someone should make a motion to recess? Our meeting? Please?
I'll move.
Thank you. It's been moved into second. All those in favor?
While, second.
All those in favor for recess? And opposed? Okay, we are in a recess. Okay.
We're back in touch now.
We're now going to reconvene our school board meeting now that you're all on a sugar high. Thank you. All right. So, we do have other things on.
Thank you, Leland.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank Frank. He inspired me for 26 years of work had to get me in the kitchen and cooking. All right. Revisions or corrections to this agenda? There are?
There are.
Okay.
Down under new business, the proposal that you'll hear will discuss, and we don't expect action on it tonight from the board. It's to convert one student day to one teacher in-service day.
Okay, so the two turns into a one?
Yeah, just change those two twos to one.
Okay.
Then, under the... Yes, under the new business, we have a staff slash parent request, right?
Oh, gosh, did I bring that?
Anyway, there is a request regarding tuition.
Yes, that was to this board. And we'll do... Are we gonna do it there?
Well, it is a new business item.
Right.
I don't know if it could be correspondence.
It could be correspondence.
And then, under executive session, you're going to have two. We have to ratify the support staff agreement. Frank has the tentative details, innovative agreement details. And that doesn't necessarily require executive session, but discussion of any of the details or terms of the contract would be in executive session. So, I recommend an executive session, so you can review those changes in the contract in the new agreement. And the present agreement expires June 30th of this year. So, we're just gonna nick a time here. And that will enable us to issue contracts for the support staff based on the new agreement.
Would you say under...
I would say under executive session.
Okay.
You know, ratify negotiations, ratify... Well, you won't ratify in executive session, but you want to discuss the terms.
Yep, yep.
And there's been no Career Center meeting since the last board meeting, so...
You can delete that.
Okay, well, we'll take that out.
But you did that already?
No, we... On your record, we'll remove Career Center board representative before. Okay, very good.
And I've got the minutes from the last policy committee meeting. It was sitting on my computer, but apparently it never got to where it was going. So, we've got to add those minutes.
We don't... It's not a quorum of our board, so you have to approve your own minutes. They should be distributed to all of us. But since there's not a quorum of the board...
So, it just gets distributed here?
You should definitely distribute them. You should review them at your committee level. And... But you have no... You know, you can't really call it to order. We can't...
Yeah, I think that's like the Red Committee.
It is.
Red Committee reviews its own minutes.
All right.
I stand corrected on that.
All right. We'll do that.
But they... You're a quorum of the board, so you need to take minutes. You need to post them. You need to distribute them, just like we all do. But the approval of them is by your committee. You know, if somebody has an issue with it, you are all sitting there. Okay?
Yep.
Anything else?
That's all the changes I had, or corrections. Frank, did you have something else?
Yeah, the borrowing is on there, number seven.
Borrowing's under new. Okay. Okay, so correspondence. We're gonna take the... We got a letter from...
Jason Spurling.
Rick.
Guess I named a name now, but...
From a teacher who has a request of us. So, we'll take that up under... What did you say?
Well, I wanted to take it up under the new business, but I think that, once again, we may end up going into executive session, and we have to start talking about the names of the students and so forth. The request is, though, for a waiver of tuition. The teacher does not live in the Leland and Gray Union School District, so that's why it's an issue.
So, do we want to put that under new business? Or do you want to just discuss it under this?
Board's pleasure. Want to take it up now? Okay. So, let me explain. We have... Oh, I'll read it.
I don't want to leave any...
To the Leland and Gray School Board. Hello, this is... And it's our staff member. Recently, my daughter, sixth grader, has expressed interest in attending middle school Leland and Gray. Although technically, she's not eligible for school choice law until ninth grade. Apparently, there have been precedents set in neighborhood districts where tuitions have been waived as a courtesy to faculty members, faculty member parents whose children want to attend a school in their district. It's a place where they teach. I'm hopefully requesting that a similar allowance be made for my daughter. She can begin here in the seventh grade this fall, instead of waiting till the ninth grade. Thank you for considering this possibility. My wife and I are still weighing the costs and benefits of this move. That's about it. We'd be very happy to have her the opportunity to work with the seventh grade team here at Leland and Gray. The Leland and Gray seventh grade next year is not crowded. In fact, we have quite a low number of students.
About 42?
Forty-two.
Is that what you have now? Last I heard, it was 42?
Presently, we had... The present seventh grade is about 70 or something like that. So, there's plenty of room. The other thing to consider is that it's certainly a compliment to the school if the teacher wants their son or daughter to attend the school. Quite often, the son or daughter refuses to attend the school with the parent, but that's another matter. However, it is a compliment to the quality of the school, so I do think it's a good move in that regard. And the school, the district from which this student comes, has their own seventh and eighth grade. So, you know, we... That the parent can't appeal, as some parents do in Grafton. We have some students coming from Grafton pay tuition at seventh, eighth grade, because they do have a choice at seventh, eighth grade. Then ironically, they don't have a choice at the ninth grade. And so, they have to come here under the high school choice, you know, law. In this case, the parent is saying, you know, "I'd like my daughter to start in the seventh grade." And presumably, if she likes it, she'll stay through ninth through 12th. And at the ninth through 12th grade, in this particular case, the student will pay tuition. Any questions?
So, the student would pay tuition, or their town?
Well, I'm sorry, the town pays tuition. Yeah, good clarification. Thank you for clarifying. Yes, the town pays, because that town doesn't provide high school, ninth through 12th. They only provide K through A.
You raise an interesting point, but I don't think we need to consider it. Does the student want to come?
Oh, yeah. That's another business.
We're not gonna ask that.
Yeah. Well, presumably, that's the reason for the...
That's the family's issue.
The reason for the request is to do that.
Right.
You know, I actually, you know, I've...
That was expressed in the line.
Yeah.
Oh, it was.
Yeah. I tried to leave out some specifics about the child.
Given that one parent is a staff member here, another parent is a staff member at Newbrook, and an older sister is a student here, I hope the administration will see, find it okay to accept this request.
I think it's our decision.
Yes, well, I'm recommending.
It's our decision. It's their recommendation.
I'm recommending that you accept this request.
By all means.
It has been part of a bargaining agreement and other professional bargain union contracts in other school districts. It has never been here, but that doesn't mean it can't be done. And it has been, I think, by previous boards, been denied, which is interesting. But you, as a board, are not obliged to, you know, do what past boards have done. And this was quite a while ago, so I think, Frank, your recollection of mine may...
When we had 100 more students here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Move to accept.
Okay, it's been moved to accept this request, and seconded by Bauman, moved by Howie. Any other questions or comments? Any other thing from the administration? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Any objections? Motion passes? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll ask you and inform the...
Very good support from our students.
Employee.
Okay. All right, so we're on to... That was the only correspondence.
I do have one other correspondence. We received a letter from the Stratton Foundation with a check of $5,000 specifically to provide dental care to our students who would other... Who would not have access to treatment otherwise.
That's great.
So, that will... I expect cover all the costs for dental care for the students in need next year.
That's incredible.
Why would Stratton do that? I mean, it's a very nice...
It's the foundation.
Yes.
Right, I mean, a foundation, but... Oh, never mind. I can ask somebody private. Take up the whole board time. It's very nice.
I just want to add that they gave us $4,000 this year, first $1,500. And then, when we ran out of money, they gave us another, I guess, another $3,000. So, it was $4,500. And then, we received $1,500 from a private donor. I will have a report for you in August about the actual dental clinics. And we also signed up a number of families for Medicaid through Obamacare, Obamacare Navigator. So, that cut down the costs even further, so...
That's incredible. Go ahead, Patty.
Just a little comment, since I work at Stratton, and I actually do work with Tamea Monger quite a bit on different things. And some schools that do get funds from Stratton Foundation, they do the Stratton Foundation, or they do research and find out what events, because they do fundraising. They don't just come up with this money magically. And kids do volunteer, go to the Stratton Foundation and say, "We'd like to volunteer to help at your event," you know, because it's community service. And so, I would like to think that maybe we might, you know, look, do a little research and see what they do. Most of their events unfortunately happen during the winter, but they do a lot of... It's hard work, and there's a lot of events they do.
Great, thank you, Durin.
I'm sure our students are listening here, and the student council may take that out.
Okay. Now, we're on administrative reports. So, that's back to you, Durin. I know you didn't have a written report this month. Durin's been a little busy with graduation and many other things, so...
Yes. The big thing that I've been busy with is that for seven full days, I was with 30 English teachers from India and Pakistan. And there was an article in Today's Reformer about it. And I don't... And there is a mistake. It says that I would be traveling for the next two weeks with the group to Washington and New York, and I'm here. So...
We're glad to have you.
Though we have five students who are all soph... Yeah, they're all sophomores who are on the trip. It was incredible. And I have Steven and the board to thank for allowing me to have this deeply enriching experience. And also, very much to thank Melanie Zlinski, the director of student services, who served as acting principal when I was out. And Jeanine did this program last year with about 30 Pakistani students. So, the teachers came with their students. And so, there was a teacher group of intercultural reconciliation and a student group of friendship building. So, I didn't know if you wanted to say a couple words about that?
Yeah, so last year, I left school early to be able to be on this program. And it was like the best three weeks of my life, because I made 25 new best friends from across the world. And I'm so happy that we got to do it again, and also that the teachers got to come and experience our school culture. Because one thing that I learned last year was that schools in Pakistan are very different from schools here. So, that was really exciting for me, to meet the teachers and to see that they got to see our school. I think they were all very impressed and excited about our teaching and learning styles.
Great. Thank you.
I know we have a lot to discuss tonight, so maybe we just talk another time. I don't even know how to start with what this experience has been like.
I mean, I only got a tiny little window in it. Bruce and I went to the reception for them. And I, in the very short period of time that I had to speak to several of the teachers, I was just so impressed. And they clearly, like Jeanine said, they were very impressed as well. And they were so welcome and warm. And they had so many questions, and so many great questions. And it was great. I really enjoyed myself that afternoon. I would have loved to have had a lot more time with them. And I'm glad you had the week you did. And I'm glad that you kids had a great time with them as well while they were here. Anything else? Bruce, I don't know if you wanted to say anything?
Do these teachers high school or elementary school?
All. They all teach in the U.S. State Department's Access Program, which is made up of after-school programs to teach American, English, and culture. And so, that's the connection that they all have. So, some of them... Most of them are English teachers in elementary, middle, or high schools. Some of them are not teachers, or just volunteers in the Access Program. And they have a curriculum that they all follow, including... And asking me questions like, "How do you teach Halloween?"
Oh, we have Steven, who does that for us.
So, that was the glue between them.
Just one more question. What is it that they found so impressive about Leland and Gray?
I'd say that there were four things, which I shared with the faculty at our meeting on this past Monday. One was the quality of instruction, the care that the teachers... So, just the whole diverse instructional strategies in their tool belt. The other was how much the teachers cared whether the students were learning the material or not. The relationships between the teachers and students in the classes and outside of classes, as well as in the after-school program. And last, and definitely not least, that our students didn't have to wear uniforms. They also visited, in the after-school program, Ramp, which is a job training mentoring program that's run by youth services. They visited CLIA Civic Leadership Education Action, Leland and Gray TV studio, making our morning announcements. And most impressively, they visited the Gay-Straight Alliance. And that was an incredible experience for them, since there is... It's complete stifling of that conversation in both their countries. And the group was so warm and so sharing. And they all had to admit, they knew someone back home who was gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, who couldn't... Who had nothing like this, like they did. So, it was... I mean, and this is just, you know, one little slice of seven days, and you had three weeks of the best three weeks of your life. I just... Durin's jealous of your food. No, I'm actually really glad to be back at work, so I don't have to be so emotional.
The cursive, the comment was interesting.
Oh, I'm not getting... Right.
Yes.
That's out of the curriculum, isn't it, cursive?
No, they teach cursive in the elementary schools. I've seen more cursive here than any other school I've worked in.
Yeah, that was interesting.
Oh, no, our students have learned cursive. They might not get a lot of practice by the time they're in high school, but...
Oh, I wrote that paragraph on the SAT.
There you go.
Yeah. Someone has to use it. Okay.
Just a couple of things, not about India and Pakistan, but the school evaluation is very much official. It's a Cassleton State College course. I made a few copies because we are looking for a community member to join the evaluation team. There's two days of training in the summer and then there are the visits in the fall, two days at the three schools, so our school, Mill River, and Otter Valley, plus a few more meetings after that. But it is a three-credit graduate course and for high school students, it's a dual-credit course, so they get college credit for it. And we did budget $5,000 for the program, though that is mainly going to go to paying the instructors, Helen Beatty and Martha Rich. Basically, Cassleton State College is not paying instructors. They're awarding credit if we pay the credit fees. So some teachers may do this not for credit. So I offer it to the school board and if I can pass out the, anyone who's interested in looking at it and anyone who's really, really serious about it, I have the long version here too.
So this is a place in the NEASC. By not having the NEASC accreditation, we're having our own in Vermont. This is a pretty exciting prospect among the superintendents that many of us feel that this will be an energy better spent, both financially and in terms of time commitment because it'll be on a much closer cycle. It may actually lead to informing the Agency of Education's Rebecca Holcomb's work on the education review process that she's putting together throughout the state. And probably pilot schools would be involved in that. But this is a rare opportunity for a member of the public, for yourselves, to get under the hood and see what it's like to be in other schools and put the best of each together.
So when would you need them to let you know? Because I doubt anybody would be able to commit.
By the end of June.
Okay. If anyone's interested.
I'll see.
Look it over and get back to Durin soon as possible.
And if you're a student too, huh?
The students have already been getting their requests, so there's a lot of student interest and the deadline to that is later this week. And there's one other point that I wanted to say. Yes, in the June newsletter, the cover story is something about, something called "School Evaluation: One Year Later, Where Are We?" And it's an interview with the people who had been on the NEASC committee ten years ago, as well as people who have been on NEASC visits, and myself, to talk about what NEASC was about and where we are in developing this new process. So giving the full history because it continues to come up as a topic of why did we leave NEASC? And after you read this, it's crystal clear why we needed to change and hopefully this changed. Certainly it's a lot more cost-effective, but I also hope it's a lot more effective period.
That was the goal.
And so the last thing that I wanted to share, if we're up to that, is that the new business or maybe I can wait on that?
Which was it? Because we can move it.
Which is the proposal about converting the two dates.
Right, that's under new business.
Thank you.
Any questions for Durin? No, we'll move on to Steve or you're next.
Yeah, I won't take up too much time. I'm going to pass something around there. Should remind you of the importance of the central office function in finance, that Big Book indicates some of it. But this is the kind of report that I get on a monthly basis that indicates the Vermont Agency of Education, Special Education, and Medicaid Finance. You may not be aware that I have two people who work on making sure that we get the billing right for reimbursement for services provided for students who qualify. And you'll see in this list, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. We've got nine different districts that are reporting on this and getting the sub-grant and so forth, so I just pass it around so visually you can see. Leland and Gray is fifteen thousand eighty-seven dollars received. This, I think this is for the date and then there's nothing on the S chip reimbursement, but the various towns, it varies from twelve hundred dollars to fifteen thousand dollars. It's the kind of little pieces of the accounting system and dribs, you know, it adds up and it's important to do, but it is certainly an example of the kind of complexity we have. And I just show that in reference to the fact that the red committee did finish their work and conclude without bringing the issue to the public for a vote. I certainly support their decision, it was unanimous. And I'll pass the article around in case you haven't read it, so it's quite accurate. And what this means is the committee will be encouraging any of the towns that, okay, you know, this didn't happen, but if you want to get together and do something, you know, to improve sustainability for the excellence you have in your schools, you know, it's up to you as individual boards now. And so Jamaica Board, let's see, Jamaica Board invited Townsend Board and gave a number of dates this summer to meet. The Townsend Board accepted to meet immediately or as soon as possible, June 26th. So on June 26th, there'll be a joint meeting with the Jamaica and Townsend Boards. Jamaica is meeting tonight, so I can't confirm that that date from Jamaica's point of view, but they offered it, so they should be good on it. Anyway, I encourage that process to move forward and if members of the public are interested, they should attend those meetings and certainly share their views with the board members of those two boards. I know that the Jamaica Board, Townsend Board also delegated one of their members to contact Rick Thorpe, the Chair of the Wardsborough Board, to see if there's some interest from Wardsborough in collaboration. Let's see, oh, this is good news. I want to make sure we don't forget to recognize two students who were honored at the annual Scholar Leaders Banquet sponsored by the Vermont Association of Middle Level Education. And so this is recognizing middle school students, in this case, eighth graders for a scholarship and leadership. And the two from Leland and Gray, I have the last name, yeah, here we have Carson Petty and Morgan Lynn Stevens. And they were selected by the faculty to represent Leland and Gray and receive that honor. They had a banquet there, the Commissioner of Education spoke, Rebecca Holcomb. And the highlight of the evening is that the two winners of the, I've forgotten what the name of the scholarship is, but there's a competitive speaking scholarship that is won by two students in the state of Vermont every year and then they go to the national competition. Anyway, those two students spoke. One was definitely going to be a politician for sure. But anyway, that's always the highlight. And it's very interesting that both Rebecca Holcomb and the two students' themes were very similar, you know? Do, you know, take the challenge, you know? Do what you want to do. Don't just be adding on to your list of activities because you want to have a nice resume to go to college, you know? Figure out what you want to focus on and really enjoy what you're doing. So, thank you.
Okay, questions?
I want to thank Melanie Zlinski attended that banquet.
Oh, good.
Durin wasn't able to go, but it was a terrific event. How about, well, you can see on the list, quite a few schools represented, forty-four.
Okay, if there's no questions, the student rank?
A report? Sure, I have a financial report I wanted to share with you as we're approaching the very end of the fiscal year, so. And while that's going around, I'll just mention that you may recall we had a plan to purchase a tractor and we have awarded a bid and we'll be doing that as part of our capital plan. And as with most items at this time of year, in June, we have addressed the plan and we're doing pretty well with those things that we control and those things that we don't control, there have been some surprises. So let me go over those with you. Everybody have a, it's a single sheet?
Come on.
Okay, so I'm looking at the income and expense report and you can see in the first column of data, our annual budget, six million eight eleven is in revenues and six million eight eleven in expenses. We had a balanced budget because we did not need to address prior year deficit when we planned this budget. And we didn't have surplus that we could refund, so that's the traditional budget format. You can see that up in the revenue, the total revenue, so of six million eight eleven, we received six million five fifty-four. That two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand will be completely received for you Townsend residents who know that you just recently paid your last quarter taxes and those tax receipts will be paid to Leland and Gray pretty soon. I mentioned earlier that unlike last year where we had a surprise where we didn't have as many tuition students as we had planned on and it created a revenue deficit, not so this year. We are going to actually be a little bit ahead of our plan, so we forecasted well and our students stayed with us throughout the year. So that's a very good, you know, obviously, financial resource for the school and great to have those students from Grafton and Athens and Wardsborough and some of the other surrounding towns, Arbor. So overall, the revenues will be on track for regular ed and they will be ahead of the budget for special ed, the reimbursements. So we will have a revenue surplus. Unfortunately, the spending deficit, as I mentioned in the last meeting, will be greater than the revenue surplus. So we, it's likely we will have an overall deficit, don't expect it to be substantial. You can see when you look down through the expenses there, even though we only have about twenty days of the fiscal year, there's still a lot left to expend in that far column, whereas this favorable, unfavorable variance. Most of the larger numbers in the programs, you know, like art, nineteen thousand, English, sixty thousand, that's to be expended, that's because our, most of our teachers have the option of taking their salary over the summer and I will accrue that expense, so it will all be recorded in the fiscal year. But most of those resources will be spent. You may wonder why are we already over budget in the first line under expenses? General instruction, that's primarily a regular education placement that we had to make for five oh four services, tutoring services at one of the, it's an outside placement from Leland and Gray.
That would be reimbursed, right?
Unfortunately, that's a regular ed expense, so it will not be. We also addressed some math intervention in addition to the original plan and that's also part of that. But most of this is, these are circumstances beyond our control in terms of exceeding the budget. The other large number you see, just as a reminder, you see down almost at the end of the regular education, you see alternative ed, big surplus there, but then a couple of lines down, you see special education, nearly a quarter million over budget. Well, remember that we changed the plan in this fiscal year subsequent to the budget because of our student population and so that the two-hundred-and-forty-four is substantially offset by the hundred-and-eighteen, but it's still a significant deficit and that's the source of our deficit for this fiscal year. It's primarily in special education. But Patty, as you were mentioning, this is where we do get about sixty percent of reimbursement on what we spend more than what we had planned, so that's where I see this fiscal year closing out in a reasonable fashion. You won't see a very significant variance on the nearly seven million dollar budget, it will be less than one percent variance when we're all done. And then keep in mind that we did add to the tax rate seventy-five thousand in our final approved budget in addition to our spending so that we could deal with the prior year deficit. So given that the tax rate has finally been passed and we're beyond the reconsideration period, you have a solid plan for funding for fiscal year fifteen. And if everything goes well, as expected, you'll be basically break even, you'll be where you ought to be, even with the budget. The other number I'll just mention briefly, you may wonder why at this time are we twenty-seven thousand over in the pupil support services? This is a program, again, that's been funded by a grant. It's a grant that we were very fortunate, Durin, initiated to address a really difficult situation for Leland and Gray. And again, that will be part of a revenue surplus that pays for that variance. So one other quick reference for you, if you flip the page and you look at the balance sheet, this is where, you know, it's the measure of solvency, it's where it's really important to be paying attention in the business office because it deals with all your liabilities, all your prior year surpluses and deficits and, you know, that's what a balance sheet does. It rolls the short term and the long term together into one number. If you look at the retained earning, it's called fund balance slash retained earning, that number is probably not too different than what we'll land up with in the end of the year. But, and that will be a deficit. But you see our assets are primarily cash, one point one million, but we owe the bank a million. And so when you take the difference between our assets and our liabilities, we, you know, we have a little more liabilities than we have assets. That's what I'm saying will be addressed. You have a seventy-five thousand dollar built-in surplus to deal with what we forecast is a small deficit. And I believe we will just, we will just get by as we should for cash June 30th and we will need you to approve that tax and suspicion note for the July 1st and you will have sufficient cash to operate for another twelve months.
Leaving us in good shape?
You're going to be in good shape, yes.
Have a question.
Sure.
For freshman Emily, what's the terms of the million dollar payment to the bank?
Yeah, so that's a tax anticipation note and because we have five towns and they all collect taxes and pay us on a different schedule, generally July and August, September, we're, you know, really short on cash, so if you take our approximately a half a million dollars a month in those early periods as a expenditure with very little revenue coming in, that's why we need to borrow. Tax anticipation note is a standard provision in the state law that school boards are authorized to engage in. It is less than a year, it's either a one year or less, so we don't carry debt from June 30th into July, so we will pay off this million dollar note by June 30th. But we need to do the short-term cash borrowing. Most of your towns are doing this as well, so it's not unfamiliar. However, Wyndham is in great shape with a fund balance, both at the town and the school, so you haven't had to do this.
What was that, the top step?
I'm very pleased with what the bank has offered of us in terms of a rate. This rate will be one point two eight percent is the expense, but on the same day that we draw the money, it will be invested at one point four two. So we'll actually make a profit if we don't draw on the loan, but of course, we do the transaction because we need the cash flow. So whenever we're not drawing on the loan, they're paying us one point four two percent and we're paying them one point two eight percent. So I wish we could all do that. That's not the way.
Good job, Brian.
So, yes. That number used to be, when I first started.
A lot different.
It was about eighty thousand dollars we would make on cash flow between a borrowing rate and investment rate. Now it's two tenths of one percent, so at least it's still favorable. Yeah. But the net is probably around seven thousand, the net expense.
Great. Question? Okay, anything else? Anything else for me?
That's it. I did mention briefly the tractor purchase, the capital fund was, had planned on that, you know, acquisition. Capital fund is still in good shape as far as reserves. Your budget that was passed shows that we are going to draw on that reserve in the future for future projects. The other fund is the special revenue fund, you know, we don't budget for that and I don't generally report routinely, but I'll just mention that the most significant part of that is the food service program. That continues to run as expected, revenues matching expenses. The other significant part of that fund is the Journey East program, which is about a hundred thousand dollar annual revenue in and out, which is again remarkably well-managed and been sustained all these years with the good work that our students have contributed to. And then we have a student activity fund, that's where you have the, all of the advisors' class accounts, you have the field trip funds, the special student fund raisers and that's about a hundred thousand dollars that comes in and out every year. And again, that's in good shape where we don't carry any loan balances to student groups. Students raise the money and then they get to spend it. We don't spend it first and then raise it later, so. Good shape.
Great.
All right, I didn't mention the trust fund. The trust fund, I should mention that. I have just updated the trust fund, so we're ready for our awards in graduation. It's about a hundred and seventy thousand dollar principal balance for many, many families in the area who have donated and given us memorial scholarships. That money's invested and then awards are made, about seven to ten thousand dollars in awards are made each year at graduation. Many of you are familiar with those awards, so I just. So I just provided that information to Durin and her staff so the faculty can make those distributions. The trust fund has been difficult to maintain the rate of return, as many of you know. The bond rates, I used to get 6%, 5% on a couple hundred thousand dollars. And then that was a nice $10,000 award, you know. But now, now it's this 2% or less. But we're still in very secure investments. And hopefully, the trend will change and we'll see some growth there. That's a quick recap of all your other funds.
Great, thank you. I think that's important. Questions for Frank? Well, thanks, Frank.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Okay. So we're on old business. The red committee report, Stephen sort of just said that to you. I don't think we really need to say.
Sorry, jumped to the gun.
No, no, I appreciate it. I don't think we need to say anything more unless somebody has a question. If not, read the argument after you have questions. There is no longer a committee at this point in time. There is a final report that needs to go out, which will. And you'll all get it.
That's after three years of work?
Two and a half.
Good work.
Well, I'll just add, since you mentioned it. I don't think anyone on the committee felt that the work wasn't valuable.
No.
And I think that the report, the articles of agreement and the report that comes out at the end that we're working on will serve to inform anybody else who's going to have that conversation. And the committee really did encourage collaboration to happen from the grassroots and to hope that there would be ongoing conversations because they didn't want to think that the work, the things that they identified and the work that they did wasn't without merit and value. And so hopefully, something more will come out of it. The law, the two laws, Act 153 and 156, made it very difficult, honestly. It opened opportunities for us to have the conversation, but it was very difficult to see it through to success. So it wasn't that, there wasn't a need. But it was hard to implement it. And I think that's where it came out. Joe or Bruce, I don't know if you have anything you want to add? Thank you, Joe, for having me here.
Thanks. I don't know if we would have all this conversation in these communities around if we hadn't had the committee. It was like a lightning rod. But we have now got a conversation going. And I think it's going to continue. Something still has to happen.
Okay. All right, thanks. If there's no questions, we'll move on. WCSU board meeting, May 28.
I just wanted to see if anybody had any comments or report about it. We did not have a quorum, full board quorum. We did have a quorum of the executive committee. And I thought it was a good meeting.
We actually had a quorum walk through the room, walk into the room at about, you know, hour and a half into the. We were short one person. We continued to operate as an executive committee. But it was close, but no cigar.
And I did leave the, I did leave the board with the challenge to consider the question, which I think I'll bring up later when we talk about your planning retreat here at the board. So I won't say that at this point. We'll wait till we get to that.
That's coming right up.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there's no comments or questions under that, under old business, we'll go to new business. Proposal to convert one student day to student day to one teacher in-service day.
Okay, I'm going to let Durin speak specifically to the need or the reason for this proposal. As I said, then I'm going to add something to it in terms of perspective for the whole SU and specifically for the bargaining unit. That is, the five, the four towns in Wardsborough that are in the professional bargaining unit and master agreement. So take it away.
I have a handout about this. Two years ago, we adopted the Vermont Comprehensive Assessment Tool, which is a web-based database. The data is stored in Vermont with the VCAT organization company. About a quarter of Vermont schools use this service for uploading curriculum and assessments as well as common assessments that are developed by the school and student standardized test data like NECAP and soon to be S-PhD. It also has an interface with Power School. So we easily upload information into the program. So we had a three-year plan for implementing VCAT. And I distributed this information probably a year or so ago. Send some around. I hope I have enough copies for everybody. Can I send another one this way? Just going to make sure we have some.
Much better.
Thanks. I know we try to cut down on paper. So hopefully, I'm putting all these copies together here a little bit.
It's just an extra one, is it? How about that one? You can send the extra one up back.
Is that an extra one?
We'll give it to Stephen.
I can make another one.
No, we'll give it to Stephen. Thank you. So you did well.
I got two here. Two for one show.
Everybody sat?
Plan scarcely, but I went.
All right, let's go.
So the intent was to upload all of the information that's on the left column on the front smaller sheet for this year, which is for each course, each required course that we offer. And the purpose of that, in addition to the reasons I shared before, is that we would be able to see what everything a, say, freshman taking required courses would learn, a seventh grader, an 11th grader, or the sequence of what happens in the social studies department or in the mathematics course sequence. And currently, we don't have any system for doing that. I can't tell you all the summative assessments of the sophomore year or of the English department or even what books that they read without going to 30 different websites. And, well, maybe not 30, five, 10 different websites. And not even all the information is necessarily on there to the detail that we can use it and report on it. So there was expectation of a certain amount of work to happen this year. And because of a lack of in-service time, we were unable to make the progress we needed to. So for example, the basic course information, the list of units, check, check. We don't have the aims of each unit. We don't have the vocabulary of each unit or the activities. And then for next year, the links to Vermont's Framework of Standards as well as the Common Core State Standards, their assessments and their rubrics, other grading tools, and then benchmark essays or other products of student work that actually get uploaded into the system. So there's a lot of work to be done. And we have really done no work on it since a year ago between the training we've needed to do around Common Core State Standards, additional teaching of, teaching reading at the secondary level as well as the teaching of vocabulary and the teaching of the proofreading tools, as well as the commitment not to overload our teachers as we have over the previous two or three years. And so when I look at the year ahead of us, I know that we need really two days of dedicated time. This is what I'm requesting. One day, we have already scheduled well during the, in a WCSU calendar, that will work well as an in-service day. That's on Tuesday, November 11. What I'm requesting is that on Wednesday, November 12, we would have a second day because this is not work a teacher can do in isolation. They need to be with their department to firmly establish what is the vocabulary that's expected to be used throughout, let's say, science, the seven through 12 sequence, plus the particular vocabulary that's taught and assessed in each unit in seventh grade, in eighth grade, and et cetera. I, the work can't happen with, particularly with the, we didn't make the progress we need to this year, plus linking it to the standards and putting their assessments in there. It takes a lot of discussion and agreement with the expectation that November 12, you're done and we can start actually using this information. And modifications would be made from there, certainly. But we have the baseline. So I would call it more than the baseline. We have the official curriculum of Leland and Gray. So I guess I'm kind of passionate about this. Because I, I hate to be behind the ball because I feel like, gosh, we didn't get there, but it was not possible to get there. And while we very much appreciated the GLAM days we've had, which is grade-level academic meetings. So a department will take a half day. We actually had a GLAM meeting today around a new program we're putting together for interdisciplinary program for eighth graders. But the, first of all, to get a whole department available and, you know, the sole, say, social studies or English department is a big burden on the system, finding substitutes, the quality of instruction while the teachers are out, the less people present to manage, you know, student life. It's all kinds of constraints. And what is exciting about having the two days together is that the social studies department can then also consult with the English department for their joint work. Same with English and science, as well as the seventh grade team. Because they may realize, oh, my gosh, look at all the summative assessments we do in January. That's an overload. We got to stretch this out in a different way. Because right now, we don't have that level of understanding of what happens in all the different courses.
It's like an amazing tool once you get the information in because everything's in one place and you can make adjustments and see how they affect the outcomes.
Well, most of you are familiar with the program of states. So that really lists, you know, by department and courses and grade level and so forth. But it also does list sometimes requisite, prerequisites, so forth. But, and it's a pretty brief summary. But this really is the complete bridge towards eventually a companion of the standards, K through 12, upon which students can make progress at any rate. And we would be able to measure it. And we'd be able to inform the student as a parent or a professional in the building educator as to what would be the next proper course or next proper ambition to take on intellectually, cognitively, and developmentally. So I certainly support this. I presume that you've been persuaded by Durin's comments on what the importance is of this. What I wanted to then step back a little bit and have you consider representing the communities you serve is how do people feel about this trading? And it is on, it is really just for one year based on this particular need. Because this isn't a need that's going to happen the following year. I think we would be in the same position if we had continued to knee ask, you know, self-study. That would have required even more days, probably. But just to be clear with the public and yourselves, what would happen is that instead of having 180 days of student instruction, there'd be 179 in next year's calendar. So it doesn't cost more financially in terms of your employees. It's just trading the purpose of the day from professional learning in-service instead of direct instruction to the students on that day. Now, we did this before in New Brook when the two schools were combined and the faculty had to have extra time to work together on the curriculum. And I didn't receive any negative feedback at the time. This is quite a few years ago, three years ago, I believe. But at any rate, I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to present, Durin to present. And I want to take this same concept to the elementary school boards because my principals from all the elementary schools have also indicated a greater need for. Another day would be wonderful if they could get another day of professional time to work with their staffs. Now, this won't work too well in Wyndham or in Marlboro because they only have 175 days on the calendar for kids right now. So they can't be trading anything. But that's why, as I said, my concern is mostly with Wardsborough and the Leland and Gray Union School District towns, not Wyndham because Wyndham only has 175 days for students. But that's where I want to go next with it. And I welcome your comments or questions about the concept. We have bargained professionally with the Teachers Association and I would have to consult with them regarding this change of the schedule because it says up to 180 school days for student days and then five additional in-service days. And this is basically making it six in-service days and 179 for students. So it's, you know, just because you like the idea doesn't mean it's a done deal yet. But I did want to know, you know, how the public feels.
Since we're not all educators, could you just explain the impact on the student, student learning on this particular basis?
Well, there certainly is. There was a time when there was a great concern about time on task. In other words, if you have a 45-minute period and you spend 20 minutes of it getting settled in and then dismissing and so forth or discussing, and you only have 25 minutes of instruction, you don't learn as much in that kind of a class. And you can take the same argument with 180 days minus one is 179. And you have basically a half, half a percent less of instruction, you know, direct instruction in terms of time. The reason that the state only requires 175 days is because that was what was established by law as the minimum. And most, a lot of school boards have, over time, negotiated an increasing number of student days in terms of the bargaining agreement. If the teachers wanted to get a raise, then we said, well, maybe we ought to be teaching more. You know, can you give us another day on the contract? See, some people nod their heads. I think they remember some of this. It's the political history of the situation. It is hard to gauge what one day is. And that's why I don't, you know, kind of not being specific. All of you remember days in your school, which were, you didn't learn very much. And probably, it wasn't so much to do with whether you were in class or the teacher was good, but rather where your head was at. So, you know, I don't think any particular day is sacred. And I do think that on a year basis, year-to-year basis, considering what our needs are for professional learning, we have to be willing to invest not only in our students and the time they have for instruction, but in our employees, the time they have to learn.
Questions? Go ahead.
The only comments I ever heard, you know, for in-service days and things like that was that it's a required work day. That it's not just a day that you can come to this or not type thing.
In terms of being the employee.
Those used to happen a little more often. There was that October timeframe where there were days that they could come or not. Yeah, that wasn't real popular.
I should be clear about that. In October, there was a BEA convention, the Oregon Education Association Convention. The teachers could go to that or not. We did not pay teachers for those days, though. We never did that. They were days, though, that were not for students. There wasn't any instruction going on. And whether the teachers went to that, those conferences or not, was their own volition and their own expense.
I'm sure people didn't realize that they weren't being paid, though, because they didn't really.
Well, I'm glad you raised that.
Seek out that information. They just.
It gives me an opportunity to reinforce what we actually bargained for in the master agreement with our teachers. We bargained for a number of days. It doesn't matter whether it's a snow day or whatever. If it's a snow day, you're not working. Then it isn't a day you worked. And you just keep, you know, you add it to the end of the calendar. Some people, you know, because they have a hard time relating to that kind of contract in their own employment, they don't understand that when the student, when, just because we don't have school, it doesn't mean that that's a paid day for the employees. And that's something you want to remind the public when you ask about that. Actually, teachers are on a 185-day contract. In Dover, they're on a 186-day contract. In Marlboro and Wyndham, they're on 180-day contract. No, I think Marlboro might be 172. But it's hard for me to keep track. That's how complicated it is. But the principals are all either on 210-day contracts or Durin's on a year-round contract, 260. And I'm on a year-round contract. So it varies depending on the employee. And it is a matter of keeping track of the days you work. And it is a matter of keeping track of the days you work. You don't get paid for holidays or vacation. You don't get paid for snow days.
I remember that extra day back when New Brook was merging, and I, I don't remember any impact at all. My question is, you said November eleventh and November twelfth, that's a Tuesday and a Wednesday. Is there reasoning for not doing it Monday, Tuesday, rather than Tuesday, Wednesday?
So Monday is, is parent conferences.
Oh.
So the students have a half day of school that morning.
It's not, it's not ideal, and I'm not thinking that this is necessarily where it's going to end up, because I would want to have something happen throughout ESU, or, you know, throughout as many elementary schools as possible. This is what is the ideal situation from Durin's point of view.
Yeah.
For Leon and Gray.
Yeah.
And it has to do with Veterans Day. Veterans Day is a day that we've decided not to have the students and allow the families to celebrate Veterans Day. That's been a situation in the past that we've got some feedback on.
Tommy?
So, let me get this straight. Do you want the teachers to take a day off from teaching and put that day into data entry of their curriculum, course plans, the stuff that you have listed in this first column into this system? They're going to be coming into school, sitting at their computers, entering this info for eight hours on that in-service day?
Two days.
Two days.
Because they have an in-service also on November eleventh.
So sixteen hours of data entry per teacher is going into this system, and when they're done with these two days of data entry, we're going to have an accessible database of curriculum information?
Curriculum and assessment.
Okay.
And, and if I could also add that, it's not that all of the decisions in the departments have been made, it's going to require the Science Department to work together in one, in one space, so that there is a discussion and finalization of, of their standard lab report, because that would be uploaded into it, of their, of, like I said, the vocabulary sequence of, of the instruction, the curriculum and assessment.
Okay, so the teams, so, so the Science Department principal will be meeting in a room together and reading on a curriculum, and that's what's going to be put into the system, and then next year, that's what they're going to teach?
Well, ninety-five percent of it, they're teaching now.
Right.
It's, it's the, but there are, there are still gaps. And next year, the expectation is, yes, they would teach all, be teaching all of it.
Okay, and, and this stuff is only a one-time deal, aren't we going to have to do this again next year to reevaluate the curriculum? And the curriculum doesn't stay the same year to year, does it?
I, I.
The basic stuff will be done.
Basics will be there, but.
Yeah, the basic stuff will be done, and then I think any modifications would be during their department meeting time, which is once or twice a month. We could spend faculty meeting time on it, they can have like a, like I said, the GLAM time. It's not the full load of getting everything done.
Because you won't change the whole thing every year, you'll just make little modifications.
Right, the, the sort of drip and draft approach that we've taken to VCAT so far, like we have a two-hour training on how to use it, we spent two or three hours in putting in some basic information, it's, it's, it's not enough. We're.
And how's the teacher buy into this? I mean, they've had since June two thousand thirteen to put some time into entering information into the system and haven't. Are they enthused about this? They think it's going to benefit them, and what's the staff feel about this?
It originally was conceived about a way to store this information for the NEASK evaluation process. So that was going to simplify their work significantly. Now that we're no longer doing that, we have continued to have conversations about the utility of it. I think when they see it in operation, they'll understand it's, it's, the full capacity that it brings. It's so new, I'm not aware of us having something like this before.
No, it's never been done before.
That, it's been something that we've been talking about. I mean, and they see the thing, we produced reports for them this, this fall, we were able to provide them student achievement data for all of their classes through the system that we haven't been able to do before. But the, I have not given them professional time to, to use the system. So in-service and V, and faculty meeting and department meeting times have been spent with other pressing business.
What other schools are using the system that haven't, like, is one of the, one of the adopters?
We're a late adopter, I would say that. I have, in, in a report I gave probably two years ago, I remember, I can look, but I think it's a quarter of Vermont high schools are using it.
And those, that have they needed to take in-service days to take the system rolling?
I don't know the answer to that, but I do know when we went all the way up to Mount Mansfield in, what was that, Jeffersonville, Jericho, something like that, in Chittenden County? We met with their assistant principal, who led, who, who is in charge of VCAT, as well as how they underwent their NEASK process, which included in-service days, additional in-service days.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to say the beauty of this that you're describing is how the departments can get together and work on this and work on their curriculums together. You can't do it without having a day like this. And having come out of a system, working for thirty years, it's a different system in New York, where in-service was, you know, consultants coming in, and this is a beautiful way, I think, to bring the staff together and really make the programs that they then want to make work with the kids. I don't think you could do it any other way.
I'd like to add that I saw the greatest merit in this and what it provides for the students and the parents, because then they can have access to what are the assessment pieces? What are the benchmark essays? What is required for this course? How does it fit in with my sequence of where I want to be heading towards graduation?
And this has been a negative, at least at Brookline, why are we leaving, I never can say it right, NEASK, is that what?
Yeah.
Why are we leaving that? Is it now going to be unaccredited, are our kids not going to be, go, looked on as accredited going into colleges? And this is the framework to produce what we need to have for our kids.
Yes, and they will be able to see it, and then we can engage the public in the discussion about what they think about the, the quality of the, of the material.
Now, students not asking for us to approve this?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure we had a little opportunity to discuss it.
Go talk to the, but, but what we have asked and what the information we've been given will help inform, I think.
I often do a delicate dance between the independence of school districts and, you know, and trying to get things to work together. Now, since we have a bargaining that covers a number of different school districts, I appreciate the comments, you know, skeptical, positive, critical, whatever, because it's part of the public discussion. I, I want to make sure that I have a handle on this as we move forward this summer. I will meet with my administrative team tomorrow and certainly advise those principals that I'm ready to proceed with their boards, based on their recommendation for the need for, you know, such an additional day next year. I think this will inform when we go to the bargaining, professional bargaining the following year, as to what happens. You know, we'll have a, we'll have a year to see whether, in fact, we get the payoff from the increased number of, you know, one day of in-service. So it's, it's an opportunity that, that I hope we were able to explore, but, but I have to wait and see, because I can't, unless I have some, some unanimity among the, some consensus among the various boards, I'm not, I'm not happy with proceeding independently. It drives parents crazy when they have kids in the high school and the elementary, and they're not off on the same day or something, and that's just, I mean, I know where I don't want to go.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions?
I just want to.
Go ahead.
Say that we have about eighty-two thousand students in Vermont.
Yeah.
So twenty-five thousand are in VCAT, so, yeah, almost a third.
More than a quarter, yeah.
Yeah, and I wondered if the students had any view on this.
Well, I guess a step forward.
Are you concerned about missing day?
No.
Is it, would that be preferable than, than having a sub?
Uh, yeah, definitely.
Yes. I meant instructionally, not for the fun factor.
Yeah, I'd say so.
Such anything like when I was in high school.
Yeah, yeah.
So back in April twenty thirteen, I gave a demonstration of VCAT to the board, and the, the report details the things that it does.
So you can go online to the WCSU website, board, school boards, and then go to school boards, look up Leon and Gray, and then you'll see on the reports, probably, what's the date?
Um, April eighth, two thousand thirteen.
April eighth.
More than a year.
Let me know if that doesn't work for you, because I hope that, that archiving of reports is beneficial.
I have dial-up still, so I don't know if I'll be able to get it.
Oh, well, you know, give it a shot. It's PDF, it's not that bad.
Yeah, I think.
I hope so.
Just take a little while to get it open.
So I, I think, unless there are other questions, we'll move on.
Okay. The next item on the agenda, oh, can I just ask one quick question? So when, when will we be requested to make a decision?
Well, I think in August, but I, you know, I'll have to see. I mean, I need to have, you know, Durin would like to know as soon as possible to make plans, but on the other hand, this particular event can happen at any time.
Okay.
It isn't tied to a deadline, it's more beneficial that earlier it is in the year, but that's generally our attitude towards in-service.
I was just going to say that in a perfect world, I would have presented this in May, so that I could include it in the student handbook, which has a calendar of the year of all the days school's not in session. And so my deadline for that is June twenty-fourth. So that, that's like sort of the ideal, but I don't think students will show up to school because they didn't see it on.
One more question.
Seems not.
We're, we're paying for this VCAT software already?
We have paid two thousand two hundred and eight dollars this year. It's six dollars per student.
Okay.
So all the information is still in there.
Right.
Waiting.
Right, so, so we're paying, so if we don't do this, basically we're paying for something that we're not fully utilizing.
Absolutely.
Because we are right now.
We clearly should hold sufficient resources.
Yeah, I have one question. Is it networked or is it a local system? Like, is it something that you could access over the internet, like on the cloud, as they say?
Yes, yeah. It's cloud-based.
Good topic.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we'll move on. So the next thing is school board planning retreat session, preliminary discussion. And before, I know you wanted to speak to it a little bit, but let me just mention that there has been some concern about doing it over a two-night thing and also waiting until September. Durin, you, you may want to speak to that yourself, I know you had some concerns about it. I personally think it's better to not do it over two nights, I think it's harder to get somebody, I, I think evenings are hard, if we can figure out a way to do it for one day, but Durin also had a, at a time, one concern as well.
I do, besides being brain dead at night.
Besides, yeah.
Which is a whole day in the hot summer. In the middle of August, I finished the faculty handbook, which is about seventy-sow pages that outlines the year, as well as all the emergency protocols and other information. But about a third of the book is just about curriculum and instruction, and the school board's goals have played a very prominent role in navigating the teachers. You have a lot of clout in the community, as well as the faculty. And so the Title I goals, those are very similar from school to school, but the school board goals is not, are not questioned. This is the work we need to do, our obligation. We work for the board, as, you know, as well as the, you know, as representatives of the community. Again, ideally, it would be that we would have our retreat before around August fifteenth, so that this can be included with the, the faculty handbook, which is then referenced for the entire school year. And it will have been at that point, three years since the previous goals were established. So that, that's, that's why I really encourage us to do it earlier, and as well as, not just for sharing with the faculty, but for me to continue to work with our literacy coach and other consultants to orient the work of, of the teachers regarding professional development time.
Good. So, how do you feel?
So you're really suggesting beginning of August, something like that?
Yeah, if that's at all possible, or end of July, or with as many of us as we can, and putting the agenda out sometime, out earlier, so that people wanting to give input can, you know, to be able to weigh in even if they can't attend. I mean, it's great to have everybody there, of course, that's the goal.
My thought is it's probably not going to happen on a weekday, we're going to do it during the day, so, so we're probably looking at Saturdays, so. I know Mike said he couldn't do Saturdays, but it, it's pretty clear that we're not going to get everyone at this anyway, so.
Do we, do we just not do it during the week if that doesn't happen?
Oh, no, we could, it's just that most of the time, school board members have jobs and can't get out of work, don't want to lose a day of pay. And so when we've done them before, we've done them on Saturdays. I'm, you know, you tell me, I'm going on your direction.
I'm flexible, so.
Are the students there?
It sounds like there's a lot of flexibility around.
Are the students available? That'd be interesting to have.
Yes.
Possible?
How long would this be, hour-wise? I mean, an all-day, eight-hour?
It's a day, yeah, it's usually, you come after breakfast, there's probably some refreshments when you get there, and there's a work session all morning, you break for a brief lunch, which will be provided, because we're going to find some place to do it, we'll have food, and then work again in the afternoon, probably done by three, we'd hope to be done by three or so.
Saturdays.
I mean, I'm, I'm looking to you guys for direction and suggestions, because.
There's no set date yet?
That's what we're trying to get a date.
That's what we're trying to come up with. We did this before and couldn't get a date in.
Twenty-fourth September, we had a date finally established, but then there are reservations about it.
Actually, I think we were saying two days, two nights in a row, is what we talked about that, so.
Right, I should have put the twenty-fifth as well, right?
We're, we're in the twenty-third, I can't remember.
First two weeks in August?
I'm sorry, on September?
September.
Uh, well, no, no, we're talking, now we're talking about moving into August.
Now we're talking late July or August.
Late July's out pretty.
Late July won't work.
What about July nineteenth?
Nope.
What's wrong with July nineteenth?
Well, I'm not here, you know, somebody else can't make it, I'm just, we're just yelling out what we can't make.
First two weeks in August?
I can't do July.
Any of those days? First two weeks in August?
August second?
I can't do the second or the ninth, but.
Sixteen.
I actually do have business work, which is.
What'd you say, sixteen?
Sixteen.
But didn't we want to get the twenty-fourth?
You can deflect.
Okay.
Sixteenth of August.
Seven.
Chance that August nineteenth or nineteenth.
During the day?
Yeah.
On a Saturday?
Yeah, there's a chance, but it's not Saturday.
Okay. There's a date being thrown around of August sixteenth.
I can't make this sixteenth, there's one person, so.
So much.
Yeah, weekends are, weekends are just positive.
So is there, I mean, is there a preference to try a weekday?
It's good.
Like, I know you're saying no, but I mean, everybody else seems to be saying weekdays there, I don't, you know.
The only weekday that works is Friday.
Okay.
Friday the fifteenth?
I'm sorry?
Friday the fifteenth?
Friday the fifteenth of August.
Works. Maddie can't do Friday.
I can.
Oh, you can't?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I miss her.
Now we're in on that.
We've got momentum over here on the fifteenth.
Okay.
Works for me.
August?
It's a Friday the fifteenth.
Of August.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. Joe?
Yeah, I'm really flexible.
Are you guys all right with that?
You might soccer try it.
Yeah, varsity soccer tryouts start the fourteenth.
Oh, that's important.
How, how long do they take?
Usually the first couple of days, we have a morning session and an evening.
Yeah, it's like early morning conditioning with.
You have to do tryouts, Janita?
Really?
Yeah.
And, uh, in the afternoon, there's another tryout, it's like, it's a conditioning in the morning and then trying out in the afternoon, so, it's kind of like a all-day thing.
Is that the earliest it's, is there anything before that? Have we chose an earlier date?
No, everything else.
No, it starts then, the fifteenth. Well, I think they're.
Well, but if we run it after breakfast and then get out late after, you know, late afternoon, it'll be soccer on either end of planning.
Yeah, and if we miss only one of them, I mean, this is. And if we miss only one of them, I mean, this is important.
Are the coaches gonna go with that? We don't want to jeopardize it.
No, the coaches, I mean, the soccer, the early morning ones usually over by what, 9:00? 9:30?
So they'd be late? Okay, so if you think you can work that around, then?
15th?
Let's give it a try.
I mean, this is a request from Durin for a pretty strong reason, I think.
Oh, I agree, I'm very willing to go with it, I just think soccer tryouts are big.
Yeah, well, they, they think they can work.
Okay, if they think they can, then I'm certainly not trying out for soccer.
Okay, does that work for you, Durin, and Stephen?
Yeah, I'm putting it down, August 15th.
So, so what you're going to need?
9 to 3:30.
We're gonna need a location, because.
Yep. Got to figure that out, location, you want a facilitator too, right?
Yep.
Okay.
I think, I think we can get, you know, one of the three from TSB.
Yeah.
There's others as well, so I think we can find somebody to facilitate. I'd call, so. So.
That night.
Everybody sat on that? Okay, we're gonna, we want to put that date out.
So you're free on September 24th, just take that off your list.
It's, I don't know whether Jeremy or Mike are gonna be able to do this. I know Mike said he couldn't do Saturdays, he didn't say anything about Fridays, so maybe Mike is, will be able to do it. Jeremy, love to just make sense.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Well, just a reminder, what I, I just want to press for this theme, this topic once again. It was at the, it was on your agenda for the board meeting at WCSU. And that is, to what extent, her degree, do you want to maintain, sustain the status quo in four areas? Student outcomes, thinking about this students as well. Instruction and opportunities for learning, learning opportunities, that's the second group, because instruction has to do with opportunities for learning, and also their programs specifically. For example, Leland Gray programs, you know, some programs are the, the interscholastic sports, the band, the music, the drama, going, you know, let's try to think about programs there. And then the third is operations, now that's the back office stuff. And I hope you recognize there's lots of opportunity for working on that, improving that, in my opinion. Then there's governance, and the reason why I listed that one is because, as your, you know, chief educational officer and my instructional folks, principals in each building, as administrative team, we need to know if governance is not possible, which is apparently the case, having the two-and-a-half-year study on red, go to nowhere, then, you know, we ought not to be spending administrative time on that. I want to know where to, where to direct my administration, you know, to be the most effective in sustaining what we want to keep and expanding on that for our kids. So, that's my little short speech on it, we don't need to discuss at this point, but I do hope you will take up some discussion, or at least use that as somewhat of a framework for what you want to set for goals. And I hope that you will think, although Durin is particularly concerned about the shorter term, in terms of her handbook and direction with the faculty, I'm very much concerned that we think five, and in fact, if possible, 10 years out for Leland Gray. We have to think about this op, this institution of educational excellence sustaining itself over time. And if we, we certainly have every reason to be concerned about the challenge of enrollment and finance, so. So, you know, that's, that's, and then, I think you're in a better position to work backwards from that as to how you get to that position of sustainability. And I think that, I know all the administrative team, and certainly our employees, will much, be much more capable of advising you effectively if we know where we're going, not just next year, but where we're going, five to 10 years. And I'd have to say, it seems terribly difficult to get boards to engage in that kind of long-range thinking. At least, and as I've shared this same speech with the other boards. They're all willing, but the actual getting to it is, is a challenge, because it's, it's pretty frightening.
Okay, so we'll work on what the agenda's gonna be, if anybody has any thoughts now or later, yeah, go ahead.
What do you think of having staff members as well?
You asking me? I think it's a great idea, although I don't, I think there's a time for each group to be discussing the same, you know, issues, and then coming together. I thought that this was not the beginning and the end of the process, but rather the beginning of the process in terms of inviting the public, you know, once you, once you get some more provocative ideas out there about what the school's gonna look like five years, 10 years from now, then people can get engaged. So, it would be possible to start though, I wouldn't object to people being invited initially. But I do think it's a board's responsibility to chew on this pretty deeply first, and figure out, have some sense of where you want to go. I mean, that's, that's. Part of your leader, that's part of your leadership as a board, is what I'm.
I feel like I have a better sense of the realities if I could get the take of somebody who's in the trenches, and who has experience, you know, as an instructor, which I don't.
Yeah, well.
The administration certainly hasn't been able to represent that.
Well, I would make that attempt, but I mean, there could, I understand the, the desire. I think that it's, everyone has a contribution to make to this process over a long time, you know.
The students.
And that's why I'm very, you know, the students are on our board for that purpose, there's not any question about whether they're gonna be involved or not. Whether we want to invite key faculty members to contribute, the problem, I think, is that, that you have to guard against this with, with any of your administrators as well. To what extent are they motivated by preserving a certain situation or a certain ideal that they have? And it's not the administration's ideal that should be driving the educational process, but the public's ideal represented by the board.
Aren't, aren't the school goals different than board goals?
Well.
The, the board goals drive the action plan goals and the administration's work.
Yeah, we want them to be together, and we want the immediate, short-term goals that strategically Durin decides upon consulting with me to be supporting that, but I guess the, what I find interesting about this discussion already is that depending on our perspective, we have a different view as to what we expect to be the outcome of that particular meeting. And I think that that's something I should think about and, you know, work with Emily and Durin to make sure that we are not unrealistic about what we'll expect out of that meeting, or where the subsequent meetings will, will go. Because Durin has a deadline of, of August to get something in her, in the handling. That's not what I am raising with the WCSU board, as well as with all the other boards. I think the survival of our small schools is dependent upon us as board members and administrators working together to see what we can do to become as cost-effective as possible and expand learning opportunities for kids at the same time.
But I think our, our, our goals as the school board, the last time, helped the pre-K 12. I mean, we, we had that conversation, I think a lot of people were there, remember, we had a conversation, we were talking about what do our children who come into Leland Gray need to know?
Yeah.
I mean, are they prepared, and how can we improve their success by making sure that we are, we are operating a, a system here that, that is effective? That's the kind of conversation we, we have to have, I think. And a test to go out for.
There's no question that the first, or the second goal, of challenging students not by readiness, not by age, drove significant change in grades, seven through 10, and then with the advanced placement and the devoting money to that endeavor for the professional development time that was required to making that happen, to bring foreign language down into seventh grade, I mean, there's lots of ways that affected what we do, and really increased the rigor in our middle school. I mean, there's no longer, hardly ever, acceleration outside of mathematics in middle school. They, they feel that their children are challenged enough.
So as an example of how gold drives it, now, that certainly isn't one that I would suppose many of us would want to give up. In other words, we're not remaking the wheel here, I don't want that, but, but it is, it is an opportunity to reflect on exactly what those are that Durin has seen have been, been effective.
It's time for us to revisit those and see what we can do to tweak them.
I can email the board the notes from that meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I have them here, I keep them with me all the time, but you should definitely do it.
Do it, that's good, yeah.
If you don't, if you don't mind, thank you. Okay? Okay, we have to, oh, review and warn policies as we're not to recommend it, is there?
Yes, Bruce, you want me to say it, or you got it down?
I got it written down here, eventually I got it written down. The policy committee reviewed a number of policies, and we're recommending to the board to warn revised policies for D8, which is alcohol and drug-free workplace, F9, which deals with transportation, and F23, which is participation of home-study students in school programs and activities. We also looked at some others, but we're not ready to warn those yet.
Okay, so when you say, you, you have, they're revised policies, you revised them to update them?
We either took the new version, the most current version that was offered,
Okay.
or we tweaked the ones, one of them, we tweaked an original one.
Right, so I will have those edits, and I can send those out to the board as we warn them and post them tomorrow, if you so vote. Then the issue is that the next meeting, you would be asked to approve them, and still, it's not too late to change something, if you're reading, you have some objection, still open to, open to consideration. But it moves the process along a little bit.
Good. And so you'll be noting the changes?
Yep.
Okay. Yep, please.
Make a motion that we warn.
D8.
D8.
F9.
F9.
F23.
F23.
Let's please include the titles for them, Peter, do you have them?
I don't.
D8 is.
I have those numbers.
Yeah, but he's got titles for you.
D8 was alcohol and drug-free workplace. F9 was transportation.
F23 is participation of home-study students.
In school programs and activities.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved, was there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Howie. Any other comments, questions? Ready to vote? All those in favor of warning those policies as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, abstentions, some passes?
I want to thank the committee for their work, they do have a bit of homework, I think maybe six policies I've voted on now. And when we get done, we will have, we'll be down to one, if we get done with those. So we're making very good progress, and I appreciate the board's attention to this, this detail and this responsibility.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it. Frank, you're up for the anticipation.
Okay, we've been anticipating this all night.
Yeah, all right, so, I'm asking the board to approve a resolution to borrow a tax anticipation note in the amount of $1,300,000 for the fiscal year 2015.
Some votes.
Second.
Been moved.
$1,300,000.
$1,300,000. Um, it's been moved by Patty and seconded by Howie, am I right?
Yep.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Anything else, Frank?
I will pass this document around, we need a majority of the board and we need an elected clerk, so please sign away.
Don't sign until we vote.
The document needs three, three signatures.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And opposed, any abstentions? Okay, motion passes, we'll put that down. Bruce is the clerk.
Okay, Bruce, my treat.
So you'll have a separate line.
Yeah, keep in mind when you sign, you gotta sign on three documents.
Yeah, there's.
There's three different places to sign, not just sign in one place. Use your real name, there you go, three places.
Okay, so there's a consent agenda that needs a motion, unless.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Okay, it's been moved, to approve the consent agenda, unless someone wants to pull out any of those policies that we warned the last time, or has a change to any of the minutes.
Sorry.
If you don't, need a second, Patty, Patty seconded the motion by Joe. Do you want to bring something up, pull something out?
I had a question, I raised it with Steve, and he said it was all right to raise it.
Yes, please.
About the.
Okay, we're gonna pull out, let's just, is it just on one policy? Let's just pull that one policy out, so, we'll, we'll pull out F7, and we can approve the consent agenda with the minutes from May 13th, D11, policy deal, 11, drug and alcohol testing in transportation of boys, and tobacco prohibition, E8. E8. Okay? All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, any abstentions? Okay, you're up. Question on policy F7, student alcohol and drugs.
Okay, in this, throughout, and particularly under educational program for students, the alcohol and drugs, I was just concerned that there was no momentum of confidentiality of the material discussed.
Right.
It doesn't appear in the policy, and I thought that was important.
Right, we have had other policies that cited the specific laws, HIPAA and FERPA, this policy does not. This is the recommended policy language, so I'm not too concerned from legality. The laws about confidentiality of student information is, is well, well, well-established. And no policy can aggregate law. So, I, I, I know that the move towards, in these policies, unless it's a state law, is to not try to restate, you know, what other laws already say, what federal law already says. We have a lot of policies for things that are seemingly pretty minor, but important to the function of the school. We have other things that we totally ignore, we don't have a policy on it's, it's illegal to, to assault somebody in the building. I'm just saying, we, we, we don't cover everything that's in law. It's illegal to rob the school, well, you know, employees should not be stealing from the school, I'm just saying. I don't want to make light of this question, I just want to make sure Lindell had a chance to raise this. So you recognize these policies do not try to restate everything that law provides. And the protections to students is unequivocal regarding your confidentiality until, until you're 18, adult.
I just thought it was important to mention, fine.
Okay, so you're good, so we can make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
To approve the policy that was warned, F7.
F7.
Okay, it's been moved by Lindell and seconded by Howie. All those in favor, unless it's discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes, approved. Policies warned, yay. Those in payroll. Oh. Okay, so we have, we have six warrants for $200,496.92 and five payrolls for $290,524.52. Total warrants and payroll are $491,021.44. Have they been reviewed? And signed by two?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion? Make a motion to approve them. Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Patty and Howie, thank you both for being on this big time. Any comments, questions? By the people who reviewed them? All good, okay, all those in favor of the motion there? And opposed? Are you guys voting? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
To approve the pay orders?
They're all busy signing.
Signing our lives away here.
If there's nobody opposed, motion passes. Somebody would hand that, Peter, I would appreciate that. All right, so we have other, but that, we don't have other, am I right?
I don't have any other, it's public. And you need to sign the treasurer line.
Uh, the treasurer line is something different.
No, it's just the clerk.
There's a clerk line.
Oh.
And the clerk, there is several, I think there's a couple spots for clerk. Frank, the question, the, just two places for Bruce with clerk, and who does the treasurer?
Cynthia Davis.
There you go.
Yeah, don't worry about the last one, that's Cynthia Davis.
Okay, so if there's no other, under number 10, we have an executive session.
We actually have three executive sessions, at least I'm asking the board for three, we have to do them separately.
Give them the.
I'd start, and I'm just giving you an idea about the program, excuse me?
We rolled the three executive sessions into.
Oh, it's illegal.
We have to do them separately.
Well, one of them, I suggest, the first one would be regarding ratification of the support staff agreement, that is, notification ratified, sorry, it's regarding negotiations. The second one would be regarding, the second one would be regarding a matter of student safety. The second one would be regarding, the second one would be regarding a matter of student safety, and the third one will be regarding personal contract. I expect, they could be short, but... The motion should say we move, I ask the board to have a motion to executive session for purposes of negotiation to discuss the tentative agreement.
Some move.
Okay, it's been moved. And it was the second?
Yes.
By Kelly? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to go into executive session under the stated reason, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, Patty moved to come out of executive session. Baumman seconded. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, we're out. We need a motion.
Okay, move to approve the agreement between the WCSU, Leland Gray Union School District Board of Directors and Brookline Newfane Board of Directors and the Wyndham Central Education Association Educational Support Staff Unit for July first, two thousand fourteen through June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Joe and seconded by Howie. Any comments, questions?
Yeah, what did they move?
You're sorry?
What did they make the motion do?
He is bringing you over a coffee.
Oh, good.
It is approved.
Prove that.
The motion was to move, move to approve the support staff contract.
Ratify.
Ratify. Did you actually say ratified? Because I thought you said...
I may have said approved, but I meant ratified.
I think you meant ratified, so...
Your word is ratified, tentative agreement.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to ratify the agreement between Wyndham Central Education Association and those three school districts that Joe read.
And the WCSA.
We got a second.
And we got a second?
Sorry.
Joe, my, okay. It's getting late. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, abstentions? Motion passes.
All right, now I ask the board to...
To go into executive session four?
Yeah, I ask the board to motion to go into executive session to discuss the matter of student safety.
Move to go into executive session for student safety now.
Did you get that? To move by Howie and a second by Patty, is that right? To go into executive session for student safety. Safety, I thank you. All those in favor of the motion to go into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, abstentions, we're in. Baumman moved?
Yeah, move to get out of executive session.
Second.
Seconded by Kelly?
That's okay.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, abstentions, motion passes, we're out of executive session and...
No action on...
No action, just... Okay, so we have a...
Okay, now we got a third. This is for personnel contracts and I'll ask Durin to excuse herself and Frank, you can stay if you wish. With the board's permission, of course, it's your call about who's here and who's not.
Yep, I think that's appropriate.
Make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the contract.
Are you writing this down, Peter? It's Patty moved to go into executive session at whatever time it is. Okay, Patty moved and who seconded?
I will.
Okay, while seconded, yeah. All those in favor of the motion to go into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, somebody moved?
Move to...
Baumman moved out of executive session.
Second.
And seconded by Patty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, we're out of executive session.
Patty seconded who?
Baumman.
Baumman made the motion. Ready to make a motion?
I make a motion that we authorize this superintendent to renew, extend, um, Dr. Dorfman's...
Three-year contract.
Three-year contract.
Under terms...
Under terms discussed.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded by, moved by Patty, seconded by Baumman. Did you get all that, Peter?
I tried to talk very slow.
And you did well. Thank you, Patty. It was very thoughtful of you. Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a second?
There was a second?
Uh, in discussion, just make clear, once the contract's signed by both parties, it is a public document, so any terms would be available to anybody who wanted to know, okay? But at this point, I want to make sure I have the signature on both sides.
Okay. All right, ready to vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, abstentions, motion passes. You see on your agenda, the only thing that was changed was our date of our meeting. We are not scheduling a meeting in July, am I right? You haven't, you haven't got it down.
I, I didn't. I wasn't specific, that's right.
So I, I, let me just, before we do that, let me just say, are we going to want to meet on August twelfth and then August fifteenth? Or how about we hold our July meeting and then skip our August meeting? Sometimes we skip August and not July.
What's our July meeting day?
Or do we even need July too? I mean, I'm assuming we will need it. We can't go that long without. And Frank, as you know, we need to have...
Be July eighth.
We need to be directed.
July eighth is the date.
Okay.
It's on my calendar.
Yeah, that makes sense.
You got it? Okay, so, so we'll do that and we'll skip the August meeting, because we usually do drop one of the summer meetings, because we don't really need to, I think. Now, if there's some concern, we'll discuss that in July, but I think we can probably bump it. Okay, so the next meeting will be July eighth, and then our retreat is on August fifteenth.
We'll get all this by an email ready.
Yeah, you will, right?
We could do that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll try to get that out to you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Moved by Patty. Moved by Patty and seconded, you have to write it down. Moved by Patty and seconded by Baumman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? We are done, thank you. Thank you for all your work tonight.